Good afternoon and welcome to City Council Meeting for November the 15th. We'll start with a roll call. Mr. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Campbell?
I am here.
Counselor Carlson?
Present.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Present.
Counselor Palladino?
Present.
Counselor Parker?
Here.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel? Acting Mayor Dotick?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Croson?
Air.
And Mayor Higgin?
Present.
All accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on with the acknowledgement statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we are gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Maitee Nation of Alberta Region Next, we'll start with bouquets. We'll start over on my far left with Counselor, or Acting Mayor Dotick.
Thank you. On Thursday, October 14 of this year, a good friend of mine and a good friend of the City of Lethbridge passed, and that was Clint Dunford. He was a member of the Legislative Assembly in this province for many years and was a minister, including Minister of Advanced Education. I just wanted to acknowledge Clint's contributions and that of his wife Gwen as well. So I just want everyone to remember that Clint Dunford was such a good advocate for this city and a good friend of this city and that he will be missed by myself, by the citizens of Lethbridge, and all of you that are here today. Thank you.
Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I echo Mr. Dotick's comments as well. I just wanted to pass on my thanks and I really appreciate the work that Bonnie and the staff did to get the new council oriented. It's still ongoing and I really needed a refresher course on how things work here. And I know that the new councillors are also appreciating it, so it was, you know, that was a lot of work and I really appreciated it. Thank
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
Nothing at this time?
Attorney Counselor Middleton Hope?
Nothing at this time, Your Worship. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. On Saturday, myself and I believe Counselor Schmidt-Rempel and Mayor Higgin attended the opening of, I'm going to put it in English, the Meaning of Empathy Documentary because my Blackfoot is not that good. It's an amazing documentary that is playing at the movie mill, and I would recommend that anyone who can see it in the community go and see it. It's looking at the opioid epidemic on the Kanaai First Nation as well as in Lethbridge, and it certainly is an amazing documentary and gives a different insight into what some of our residents are dealing with at this time. The other thing I'd like to just make mention of, and there are so many, I will never list them all, but all the amazing community groups that are doing fundraising to support the community throughout the Christmas season. There are some great things going on, and if people have the ability to, please look to support some of these organizations.
Thank you. Counselor Palladino?
I just echo Counselor Campbell's comments about the city staff helping us out in the last couple of weeks, and that's it.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate everyone around this table. It's our first official City Council meeting. We were sworn in three weeks ago to the date, and I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. It's nice that we could actually be in council chambers. As most people know, over the last year and a half, some of us have had to stay at home, others will be here, but it's just nice to see you face to face. I do remind people that we're still under our safety health protocols under Alberta Health Services, so be mindful of that, but it's just glad to be back and congratulations to each and every one of you.
And I echo the thoughts also of Counselor Campbell and Palladino, and I'm sure everybody has just, well done on this, these few weeks of orientation. They seem like they never come to an end, but there's a lot of great information, new review, and looking forward to early December of coming out with this strategic plan and being able to share it with the citizens. So, thank you. We're doing this. I have a resolution moved by Acting Mayor Dotick that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on November 15, 2021 be adopted as presented. Madam Clerk, oh, sorry. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Your Worship, there's one addition to the agenda. It's a verbal closed report entitled External Organization Status, and it would be 14.3, item 14.3. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Dotick?
You'll call the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Next, I have a resolution moved by Deputy Mayor Croson, Consent Agenda, and you'll have it up there on the screen. Deputy Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Anyone looking at the Consent Agenda is going to think it looks quite long. There's 12 items on there, but as you will quickly note, five of those items are minutes from the meetings that we've had already this year, just wrapping all of those up. And there are also four bylaws on the Consent Agenda for first reading. This is November, and there's a lot of bylaws that we have to do at the end of each year to get us ready for the next year around rates, around subclasses for taxes, et cetera. And so those are some of the bylaws that you will see there for first reading, and I would presume those bylaws will be back for second and third reading in two weeks. So people can have a look through those bylaws, and then we will be discussing them, amending them, et cetera, in two weeks. And there is one change made in the status of deferred that people might notice as well regarding the Lethbridge Housing Authority. So those are the items that we will see in the Consent Agenda, and unless there's any questions, I'll call the question.
Any questions or debate? Seeing none, question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Moving on here, we have no public presentations today, so move on to official business motions. And the first one is Official Business Transit Services 6.1, moved by Counselor Ryan Parker. Whereas some transit users have stated loud and clear their disappointment in the changes made to the transit system, whereas the changes caused some accessibility issues to numerous stops in the city, and whereas timelines for some users to arrive to destinations has drastically increased, whereas the overall impact of the most recent changes to transit has been seen to have negative and positive outcomes, therefore be it resolved that City Council requests the City Manager to provide a report to City Council on the impact of the most recent changes to the transit system. Counselor Parker?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for entertaining this right off the City Council meeting. For new members of council, an OBM is an opportunity to request our administration to bring something back or to take action on something. And so before I get into debate, I'll just entertain any questions, if members of council have a question in regards to my resolution that I have brought forward today, or motion.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Thank you, Counselor Parker, for bringing this forward. We did hear a lot of talk in the community over the last several months, through you, Mayor Higgin, to Acting City Manager, I believe it's Mr. Van den Hoofel today. Thank you. I believe we were slated to get a report on transit at some point. When is that coming forward?
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. With all of the official business, items 6.1 to 6.5, administration has, when the resolution comes up, acknowledged that we've received the resolution, proposed that we bring back a schedule for council on December 14, which will give you the dates and the committee meetings and council of all these items here of when they'll be back for informing council.
Okay, thank you for that, because it was going to be to Counselor Parker's, do we want a date on this? But apparently administration's going to take some time and flesh out a schedule for us to look at. Is that what I'm hearing? Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing no more questions, on to debate. Counselor Parker?
Yeah, thank you. And so as members of council, this is our first City Council, so I'll do a little 101 as I'm doing this. As being the mover of the resolution, I have an opportunity to introduce it, and if members of councils want to debate either for or against it, they can speak to me after, going through yourself, Mr. Mayor. And then, of course, at the end, I will have the opportunity to close. Am I correct? Perfect. Well, thank you very much. And this was an issue that we heard, the past council and members of administration heard leading up to election, and during the election we heard the issue of transit and the changes that happened to the link, both positive and negative, because there were some positive changes that were made, and most often you always hear about all the negatives that happen in regards when you have change, because most people do not like change. Doesn't matter if they're a student, all the way up to someone being 100 years old. People don't like change, and so there's been a lot of questions answered in regards to, has there been a lot of positive outcomes or has there been more negatives? And so I think it was incumbent that I brought this resolution forward on behalf of the community, because I think it's important that we have a lot of the answers to these questions, and I felt that I didn't want to tie our administration's hands in saying in two weeks, because if we're going to do something, we should do it right. And so I'm encouraged to hear from our acting city manager that report on timelines and when these reports will be coming forward in December, which is not very far away, even though the weather is quite nice outside. So I would just ask for council's support in this motion at this time. Thank you.
Any debate from fellow councillors? Seeing none? You have a close on that, Counselor Parker?
And as most members of council know, or if they don't know, when you want to call something, you call the question, and when I call the question, I ask for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Thank you, Counselor Parker. And another official business motion from Counselor Ryan Parker. Economic incentives, 6.2. Whereas commercial businesses play a major role in Lethbridge's local economy, and whereas commercial building reinvestment is critical in keeping businesses modern and competitive, and whereas, as the most recent redevelopment incentives in the downtown core have been successful in commercial redevelopment, and whereas the City of Lethbridge strives for economic equality and fairness, therefore be it resolved, the City Manager bring back options similar to current downtown redevelopment incentives, which could be offered across other commercial districts within Lethbridge. Counselor Parker?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wonder if there's any questions in regards to my motion at this time.
Any questions from council? Mayor Dotick. Acting Mayor Dotick. I'll get this. It does say Acting Mayor Dotick. Thank you, Mayor Dotick.
Okay, actually, this is probably for administration. I do know that in the past we had on the north side a business revitalization zone as well. I don't know if it was as formalized as the downtown BRZ, but does anyone have any historical, maybe Ms. Belinda Crowson might have it, but I do remember that we had it for a while and that it sort of just fell by the wayside. So I open it to administration or to our local historian.
Want me to take it?
I will let our local historian.
The two were started at the same time in the 1980s. The downtown has continued on, but you're right, the Westminster BRZ did close about 20 years ago or so, and it had, they were set up the same way, and we do see that the downtown incentives are really reflective of the fact that they do have a BRZ. They have a group that does advocacy, et cetera, but that, of course, doesn't mean that it has to be that way. So the two were simultaneous, and I do know of several groups that are looking to start, maybe not formal BIAs, but something similar around town.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Is there any further questions on this resolution? Seeing no further questions, Counselor?
Just a quick.
Counselor Campbell?
So is that, is that kind of the gist of, Mr. Parker, that you're looking at other business districts? Is that the gist of this?
Yeah, and I'll get into that more into my debate, but that is kind of the gist, yes.
Deputy Mayor Croson?
Some of this may be more of a debate than a question, because of course we have, the downtown has now been redefined as the urban core, so it does go down 13th Street North through the Warehouse District and downtown, so it's already been expanded. So would I be correct in assuming, Counselor Parker, you were looking at this to be expanded across the entire city, and that not only are you looking for current ones, but could we suggest an amendment when we, you know, get there to that not just current downtown, but any options that administration have, because it could be new ones, entirely new as well?
I love, I don't know if that needs to be stated in amendment, but if so, to add more clarity and direction, I would be more than welcome to entertain it as a friendly amendment, just so members of council know, a friendly amendment is something that the mover accepts as something that he would like to change as a recommendation from him with the colleagues.
Yeah, expanding this out to ever administration might suggest.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Croson. Counselor Parker, you're in the queue for a question to yourself?
No, no question. No, I was just waiting. Sorry. My apologies.
All right. Seeing no further questions, would you like to open for debate?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, members of council, for entertaining this motion. As most people know, we put a lot of importance into our downtown business core, and we've shown that through our actions and through our budget. It's our targeted redevelopment investment plan. We've had some housing initiatives in our downtown where we've given businesses and entrepreneurs or developers an opportunity to take advantage of those, and at the end of the day, it's been a success, and that's been utilized by businesses, developers in our community. But quite often we hear, well, I have a business or I have an idea outside the boundaries of the downtown, and so why can't I have that opportunity? It could be a businessman or a businesswoman or businessperson, I should say, on 13th Street who wants to redevelop an old existing building, and so why couldn't they have the same incentives? And it's a good question, and I think it's important that we look at all areas of our community. If someone wants to invest a million to $2 million into an old commercial development building, we should entertain the idea, but we really don't have a policy in place or a program in place to entertain that outside of our downtown. So I'm asking our administration to come back with not only just business incentive plans, which we've had that may mirror our downtown, but other, what other communities may be doing in regards to redevelopment across the whole city. My example of being is, let's say if someone invests $1 million into a already existing $1 million, maybe a tax break or a tax deferral for maybe five years, knowing that it really isn't lost revenue, because it was revenue we never had, but in five years, there'll be new revenue, but at the same time, that business is now hiring more people to increase, redevelop their property, as well as, it adds more optimism, it adds more fairness and equality across the whole city. So I'm just looking forward to hearing what our administration may bring forward, and I'm hoping that members of council can work with administration to bring something forward. So I'd ask for council's support.
Thank you. Opening. I see Counsel, nope.
I, sorry.
Counselor Carlson?
Sorry, Your Worship, I had a question.
Sorry, I had a question, but I think we have entered into debate.
That's fine. I'll entertain questions if you have. Okay?
Thank you. Just through you to councillor Parker. Councillor Parker, this talks about just commercial districts. Some of our successes in the downtown have been housing. I'm wondering if that's at all of interest in opening it up, so it's not just focused on the commercial aspect?
I'm going to keep it at the commercial aspect right now for that reason. And I'm glad, Mr. Mayor, you allowed a colleague to me to ask questions. I know we usually don't entertain questions after we start a debate, but it's the privilege of the chair, so thank you for that. And so right now, I would like to keep it more at the commercial. But if a member of council wants to bring something more strictly regarding to housing, I think that would be a different resolution at a different time.
Councillor Campbell?
May I ask a question as well?
Absolutely. I'll entertain questions. That's okay.
I just want to, I just want to ask the administration, is this doable? I think that's the big question, because you're going to be asked a whole lot of things. And I know you're in the middle. Is December 14th doable?
Thank you for the question, councillor Campbell. On December 14th, our intention is to bring back a schedule of when the responses will happen. Something like this, which is very broad nature and encompasses many things, could be part of a larger strategy. The response might not come back on December 14th, but the schedule of when you can expect to hear back and then what stages will be reported back to council, so they'll be informed and communicate to the community that the issues raised are being dealt with.
Thank you. That's kind of just helps. Thank you.
Great to have some of these questions in for clarification, so thank you very much. Any further questions and we'll move on to debate? Seeing no further questions, it's all right. We'll move on to debate.
I think I've opened, Mr. Mayor. I have opened. And so if members of council like to add to the debate, feel free to open it at this time.
Councillor Crowson. Deputy Mayor Crowson, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Parker for bringing this forward. One of the things that I think this is going to give us new information, and that is a good thing. But we on council also have to remember when we look at this, we have to think about what's the purpose behind it. So when we get it, we have to consider that. Some of the incentives we have were designed specifically to protect historic buildings, to try to encourage that. And so we need to also maybe consider, if administration is doing this work, if this is passed, there may be a role for council to also think about the policy behind it, the why behind it, the governance behind it, what is the purpose for what we might do if we create any of these incentives? So I think we would have to realize that not only if we pass this, are we creating work for administration? And that work would give us more information. But we as a council would then also have to make sure we have a guideline, a timeline for creating a policy about why. So I will support this. I'm always out for getting more information. But I also need to, for us to also think that we have created more work for ourselves as well, because we have to create some kind of policy around this, so that we are creating the objectives we would want to if we move forward on any of these incentives. So I'm a yes, but I'm also, hey, guys, we've got more work to do as well. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Deputy Mayor Crowson, any further debate? I'll add in, I will add my support to this councillor Parker. I know I've had the opportunity of operating in business in downtown and as well, not in the downtown area, where it's been part of the downtown BRZ. And being able to open that up to all, I'd be, I'd like to hear what's going to come back from our administration. So I thank you for bringing this forward and being equal and fair across our community. So with that, have you close?
Thank you. And I'm glad I had the opportunity to close my motion at this time. I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. And I think it's important, as Deputy Mayor Crowson said, it's important that we have appropriate policy to go online with this and that something that shouldn't be done ad hoc. And so I'm optimistic of the report that's going to be brought back. I also don't want to feel our administration should be rushed, rather, let's do this right if you're going to do it. So I'd ask for council's support. And I will call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Curious unanimously. Thank you. I have another official business motion moved by councillor Ryan Parker. Off-leash parks, 6.3. Whereas off-leash parks have been a huge success in the city of Lethbridge, and whereas the current off-leash locations are seeing high usage throughout the city, and whereas not everyone has easy access to the current locations, and whereas there are numerous existing parks and green spaces within Lethbridge, and whereas there may not be an opportunity to utilize these existing areas to add smaller, sorry, opportunity to utilize these existing areas to add smaller accessible off-leash parks throughout Lethbridge. Therefore, be it resolved, the city manager bring back options in adding more off-leash dog parks in Lethbridge. Councillor Parker?
First of all, just to entertain any questions of members of council if they have in regards to this OBM.
Questions? Councillor Middleton Hope?
To councillor Parker, has there been a demonstrated need from the public indicating that there are areas within the city that are not serviced by off-leash park areas?
That's a very good question. And it's a subjective answer, because it all depends who you talk to. I know that in a growing city of our community of all over 100,000 people, we only have four parks. We have Pemaquin, Popsin, we have the Riverstone Park, as well as North and Scenic Drive. And so a lot of those locations, and I'll speak about this more in my debate, a lot of these locations, you need to either have a vehicle, you have to drive. And as most people know, not all dog owners have vehicles and not everyone, and some do have accessibility issues. And so I thought it was probably a good idea to probably look at our existing infrastructure and green spaces that maybe put miniature or smaller scale parks in these areas at a low cost. And I'll speak about more of that in my debate.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Parker to open debate?
Thank you very much. And I'm actually really excited about this resolution, because it's something I think that we can do quickly. As most people know, we have four well-used dog parks in our community. And I don't know exactly how many dogs reside in this community, if that's the term you want to use. I'm guessing thousands. But as most people know, and if you have a dog and you visit our off-leash parks, it's not only an opportunity for our furry friends to get out, but it's also an opportunity for community to be community. And I can't imagine if you drive around and you look at all the people who are visiting within these parks, of all age levels, students, seniors, middle age, and it's an amazing place. And it's actually quite a low-cost place, because there isn't a lot of maintenance besides mowing. Hopefully, most people are picking up after their animal. But when you look across southern Alberta, if you go to Calgary, you go to Edmonton, you see these smaller scale type dog parks, where you don't need four acres, but actually you can do it within a half acre. You can do it with almost in a room, an area the size of this council chambers. All you do is put up a chain-length fence, you put up a picnic table, you put out a disposal, of course, some doggy bags. And then you create a little park and using the existing infrastructure. And so when I brought this idea to a lot of people in the community, they said, you know, why not? Why can't we use, you know, when you first built Nicholas Sharon Park, I think the size of it was for almost, it was actually originally supposed to be made for a golf course. So if you can put a small, use maybe 1% of that land for a designated area, where people who don't always have an opportunity to drive to a dog, off-leash park, they can walk, they can meet their neighbors, they can meet their friends, they can make new friends. And so I think it's a good idea of looking forward in our future and capitalizing on our existing infrastructure. And so I do not know what the cost is, but I think, I can't imagine a chain-length fence would be very costly. And the maintenance, you already have to maintain these parks. So if we can piggyback on the existing maintenance schedule in those places, I think it's a great idea. And I think that's something maybe our administration can bring back forward. And even the opportunity of maybe having our, you know, the sun does set a little quicker at this time of year. Maybe we can put in solar power lights in these areas, so these parks can be utilized after hours, because people do like to utilize these parks. And I know some of my colleagues around this table, as they nod their head, I know some of them have dogs and they know how well utilized are the existing parks. And so I would just ask for council's support to have our administration bring back a report and options. So I'm optimistic about this one for sure.
Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Thank you councillor Parker. I will add my full support to this, at least exploring the options. I think when we put in our first dog park in Riverstone, is it only four years ago? I thought it was longer ago than that. I think it demonstrated to the community how well-used and loved these facilities are. We have now people driving from all corners of the community to utilize that park. And I remember when we had some irrigation issues and it was closed for a while, I got more phone calls on that and when's it going to reopen than I get on most things. So I think adding some more of these around the city is something we should be looking into. And I'd appreciate just whatever information comes back. So thank you.
Councillor Middleton Hope?
I also support this as well, councillor Parker. And thank you very much for bringing this forward. My comments would be in regards to what councillor Carlson said in regards to some hiccups that were experienced in the Riverstone Park. I would hope that we would use that experience and that template that we used for Riverstone in particular in terms of not only the challenges we face, but also the costs of that particular location. If we could use those going forward, I think that would be certainly something that I could certainly support. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Crowson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Thank you councillor Parker for bringing this forward. I cannot support this at this time. And I know that's going to come across as I don't like dogs or dog parks, which is absolutely not true. I just think we're getting a little more operational with this than we need to be. We have a new parks general manager who is just getting into that department, and I'm sure will have some ideas. We've had things where we've asked the parks department to look at, you know, parks overall, and I think this is part of that. And I have no doubt that this will be seen as a need and probably will be suggested by our parks department. But I think here, we're getting just a little too far into the weeds. Let them look at their department, let them bring ideas back. And I have the expectation we will be seeing more of these, but I don't want to be this directional in, into operational matters, so I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
I will support this motion. And thank councillor Parker for bringing this forward. I know I heard far too often on, especially on the campaign trail, about not having sufficient off-leash parks throughout our community. And what I noticed is, is it's great to be able to take our dogs down and to visit other dogs down there, but it's amazing how the opportunity residents have to connect up at these parks. And it's quite interesting, while your dogs are out playing, the different conversations you can have with other residents. And so just that community getting together and chatting is great. So one of the many reasons why I will support this resolution. Councillor Parker to close?
Well, thank you very much. And we are elected to, and I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. And I appreciate, we're elected to offer and request service levels on behalf of our community. And that's important as our job is governance. I think when you're talking about getting to the point of talking about service levels and getting into the weeds, it's when you tell them that you should have three people mowing the grass versus two. That's when, that's a line that council should never cross. But if the community believes that there is a service or a need, such as transit, off-leash parks, it's incumbent upon us as the elected officials to bring those ideas to the table. And that's what I'm doing at this time, and I ask for council's support. Call the question.
Three questions been called. All in favor? Next, I have an official business motion from councillor Ryan Parker. Strange.
I had something for this council meeting.
Go Friendly Transit, 6.4. Whereas the Go Friendly bus service has been a needed service since 2008 for both Norbridge Senior Citizen Center and the Lethbridge Senior Citizen Center, LSCO. And whereas the service was discontinued in early 2020, and whereas the service is a crucial transportation service for both organizations, and whereas there's been a great hardship and stress to the ridership since the stop in service. And therefore be it resolved, the city manager bring back a report to city council on the status of the Go Friendly Transit Service. I'll open it up for councillor Parker.
Any questions, first of all, in regards to my resolution?
Questions? Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Thank you councillor Parker. A question through you to maybe administration if you can. It says it was discontinued in 2020. I believe it was just interrupted.
Sorry.
I believe it was just interrupted because of COVID, I think as most things were. And it's slated to start up again once, maybe I'm...
I can speak to that.
Okay, if you can, because that was my understanding, was it was just interrupted because of COVID and it's going to be starting up again shortly.
And I'll ask Mr. Fox to piggyback on my answer if need be. I do believe in 2020, when it was discontinued, there was an issue regarding grant funding, regards to the mandate of the bus. And so there were some logistics issues besides funding issues. Am I correct on that, Mr. Fox?
Correct. There was some issues. We have been working with Norbridge and LSCO to work through those issues. And it should be starting back up soon.
I'll explain why I brought it as a resolution, OBM, too.
Further question? Did that get your question answered, councillor Carlson?
I guess so. It was just the issue that it said it was discontinued. It was just paused, I thought. So it is starting up again or it's not? Like, do we need an update if it's all?
If I can just clarify, it's not starting back up in the same way or the same manner that it was offered before. So there is some changes to it.
Right. Councillor Campbell?
Thanks. Just on the process here, I just, Go Friendly and transit services, which we agreed on earlier, is totally two separate entities. And they couldn't bring it forward with the transit service thing?
That is true.
That is, what is true?
You're true that they're two separate.
Entities.
Entities.
Okay, thank you.
And is there any further questions? Seeing none, councillor Parker, you open debate?
Thank you very much. And just a bit of history here, so we have context in making our decisions. I do believe councillor Dohertyk, acting Mayor Dohertyk and councillor Carlson were around when we did decide to do the Go Friendly. Back in 2008, city council passed a resolution to help fund the Go Friendly Transit Service, which was a transit service that was, which was working partnership with the LSCO, Lethbridge Senior Citizens Organizations and the Norbridge. And it was an opportunity for these citizens to have reliable transportation from their residence to either Norbridge or LSCO. And it was a huge success, very well utilized. What did occur over time is it was, it kind of got outside of its mandate, where it was being utilized for different reasons. And so, and there was also some funding issues as well. At that time, it was actually a line item within our operating budget in 2008. And so what concerned me is when it was discontinued or no longer was operating the way it was, that it wasn't really, it was a directional resolution from council in 2008, and it was no longer happening. And so I can't remember council making a decision to stop that service. And so that was concerning. But after working with Mr. Fox and community services, he explained the logic of why. And I'm really glad that his team are finding a way to get that service up and running again, getting a dedicated driver. But of course, there is a consequence to that. There's a cost to it and all that. And I think it's important that community service comes back in regards to the cost, the proper, the appropriate timeframes, when this will be reduced, to give these folks some sense of peace of mind. Because a lot of these folks actually relied on this to utilize both Norbridge and LSCO. So I thought it was important that they come back with a report. I'm guessing most likely, the report will become sooner than later compared to some of the other OBM's. So I just ask for council's support.
Any further debate? I will also support this resolution councillor Parker. It's, I like the idea of having city manager report and come back with how this may change. And I have heard a lot of those concerns, obviously, throughout LSCO and Norbridge, and want to know exactly what's happening. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. And with that, I'll ask you to close.
I call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, I have an official business motion, 6.5, moved by councillor Ryan Parker. Toxic slash e-waste eco drop-off. Whereas environmental stewardship is a high priority of the city of Lethbridge, and whereas the city has made major strides in the areas of recycling, and whereas the current recycling depots have been and continue to be well utilized, and whereas there's a need to dispose, collect household hazardous waste in our community, and whereas the current location to drop off these items is limited to driving outside the city, and whereas there's already three current recycling depots in Lethbridge, which may have the capacity, capability and capacity to offer an eco drop-off. Therefore be it resolved, the city manager bring back a schedule for a report back on on options to deliver these services at the existing recycling depots to the city council meeting of December 14th, 2021. Councillor Parker?
I'll just entertain any questions right now from members of council. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions? Acting Mayor Dohertyk?
Yes. Well, this question is really only peripherally related to this in the sense that the preamble does talk about the recycling depots having been and continue to be well utilized. Now, maybe administration can answer this for me or not. The organics waste, is there opportunity for people to drop off organics waste in the existing recycling depots? So a lot of people are using these depots and not using the blue bins to the same extent as others. So is there an opportunity there as well to be able to offer citizens the opportunity to do their organics waste? to do their organics waste recycling at the existing recycling depots? Thank you.
We have with us Joel Sanchez, and he'll address that question for you.
Mr. Sanchez.
Good afternoon, thanks for the question. Absolutely. Currently at the recycling stations, we have a setup that includes the recycling depots plus the yard waste sites. So yard waste sites are in operations from April until, actually this Sunday was the last day, November 14th. So they are seasonal service, that where services can, residents can go there and drop yard waste, branches, leaf. We, this year was actually one of the, for the first time that we receive over 2,000 tons at the site. So they are being used by the residents, but the opportunity that we have right now for the organics materials is to collect up to 10,000 tons. So we know that the depots are collecting some of this material today, and they will continue to be there for that material that does not fit into the green card. So that material that is bigger than three feet, doesn't fit into the green card, could go to the yard waste site, similar to what happened on the recycling site for larger items that they don't fit in the blue card.
I want to be more specific in the question then. The green bin rollout is slated to begin at some point in the future. The items that are intended to go into the green bins, that would be ostensibly or theoretically delivered to the public, is that material presently allowed to be deposited at the recycling sites as well?
No, because some of that material will be, like branches, leaf, any of the green waste could be dropped off at the yard waste sites. The green card will include also food waste, and that food waste is the one that cannot deliver there. It has to be delivered to an approved facility from Alberta Environment and Parks, and there are some limitations that they have in place in order how to process and how to receive that material.
So using a metaphor, as a giant green bin at the recycling center sites, if citizens were able to get the organics that would normally be collected in the green bins that is being proposed, if there was an availability of a large green bin at the recycling sites, is that something that could be done, at least theoretically?
Theoretically, yes, it will be to, or there needs to be an approval to AEP in order to get the appropriate settings and the zoning for, to receive this type of material and then bring that to a processing facility.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Campbell.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, just for a second, I mean, I'm probably getting way ahead of myself, but what are the safety components of dropping off, while hazardous, I guess that's a broad definition, but would that entail a lot of scrutiny?
Yes, that's actually, the toxic and the hazardous materials is something that we're looking at at the sites, and it will be actually, we are working in the plan to bring that as a probable new initiative for the new budget that will be presented to council. There are some elements that have to be considered, again, when you bring the HHW, there has to be proper containment for the materials, it has to be, again, zoning and approval from AEP in order to handle that material outside of the approval that we have. But it's certainly an option that we will entertain, and we are going to come back with delivering options to either have the possibility to drop off at one site, two sites, or three sites, depending on the cost that is going to be incurred in each one of those options.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Counselor Parker to open debate.
Thank you very much, and this is my last OBM, and I appreciate members of council to entertain these days, so I thank you for that. This is also an exciting resolution. As most people know, if you go through anyone's garage or their basement, someone seems to have some kind of paint or an old computer or an old TV that's just sitting around that they always say, I'm going to get rid of this sooner or later. And sometimes people say, I'm a little impatient, and they end up throwing it in the garbage. And it's sad, but they do, and you'll see the odd monitor in someone's garbage or something like that. And I think the reason why is it's not that they don't care about the environment, they just don't want to drive outside the city, close to five to 10 kilometers, or even 15 kilometers, all depends where you live in the city, and get in line to drop off one single computer or laptop, or the odd can of paint. But it seems like we all have this odd piece of hazardous waste at their household. Quite often, or once in a while, in a blue moon, you hear that some local business is doing some kind of toxic roundup, but it isn't consistent, and it isn't something that you can rely on a daily basis or on an annual basis. And so I do not know what this is going to look like. I don't expect that our existing recycling centers, which have been a huge success, to be utilized each and every day for a drop-off, something like this. As Mr. Sanchez says, this takes organization regarding safety, regards to implementing such a plan as this. So it could be anything from something quarterly, once done every three months, where you drop off at maybe one location in the city, or it could be at all three locations. We could probably partner with a local provider to partner up with the city in doing something like that. But I just think since we have the existing sites already, existing infrastructure to drop these off, and if we can find a way to do this in a safe way, that is only safe to the residents, but a safe way to the environment, I think it's a win-win for everyone. So I think it's important that we give this direction to our administration, because I've heard that from the community as well, so I'd ask for council's support.
Counsel Middleton Hope.
As, excuse me, through the mayor to Counselor Parker, as you'll probably recall, we used to have the ability to drop off painted fire halls. This is a much better utilization of that resource, dropping it off at these centralized locations. I would ask that the administration, as they go forward in examining this motion, look for additional opportunities to utilize these recycling facilities, because these are exceptional facilities. Some cities don't have the opportunity to be able to do the recycling that we are able to do. The last piece of my comment would be, would be to encourage administration as well in developing some strategies that are made public in terms of how those materials are now being recycled. So I certainly support this initiative. Thank you.
With that, Counselor Parker to close.
Thank you very much, and just another thing, one of my colleagues, wise colleagues, said there might be an opportunity to maybe a revenue generation out of something like this. So I'm looking at all the options, but I'm looking forward to the report because I think we should have an open mind, but I think the community would be very receptive of this, and I'd ask for council's support, and I will call the question on my final OBM. Thank you.
Counselor Parker's final OBM, he calls for the vote. Of the term? All in favor? He opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we're moving to submission 10.1, and Chinook Arch Regional Library System Agreement.
So Mayor Higgin and other members of council, I will be recusing myself from this portion of the meeting due to pecuniary interest and because any decisions made with regards to Chinook Arch would directly affect Lethbridge Public Library, so I will be stepping away for a bit.
Thank you, we'll make sure to come back and get you when we're done. Now, could I have somebody who would like to move this? Anyone for? Okay. Deputy Mayor Croson. Be it resolved that council proceed with signing the amended agreement as provided by the Chinook Arch Regional Library System, CARLS, board, and assign a member of council or city manager designate as the city's representative to Chinook Arch Regional Library System, Carl's, board until council reviews the KPMG report recommendations from the Lethbridge Public Library, LPL. Counselor Croson, or Deputy Mayor Croson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So we are continuing a KPMG review into the Chinook Arch Regional Library, and what we're looking for is sort of a bridge, a decision that needs to be made now so that we can move forward, and things may change once we get the KPMG recommendations. So the recommendations that have come forward from administration are that we proceed with signing the amended agreement as provided by the Chinook Arch Regional Library System, and that we assign either a member of council or a member of city administration. And I believe the recommended way to go ahead at this point would be the city manager or designate to sit on that board until council has the time to review the report from KPMG and to make any final decisions. So that is the motion that is before council. If there are any questions, I will take them at this time.
Counsel Carlson.
Thank you, through you to Counselor, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Croson. Just wondering if it's okay with, I'll propose it, if you want to see if it's friendly or not, to remove in item number two, remove the words "a member of council" or, so it's clear that we are assigning a city manager or designate.
That is a decision we have to make, and I would support that decision to make it, the city manager or designate, who's on there? He's not here, so we can give him more work.
That'll learn him.
Except as a friendly?
Yes.
Now we'll entertain questions on the amendment. Is there any? The friendly amendment, okay, okay. No reason about that, perfect. All right, any further questions? And then for debate, Counsel, Deputy Mayor Croson.
As anyone who did read this, if we do sign the amended agreement, this is an old agreement, and we're just maintaining the agreement, so it should not put us into any concerns if we make changes after we get the KPMG report. And as I said, this is just a way of bridging the gap between having to sign it now and making any changes that we might consider in the future. So I would hope my colleagues will support this, and unless there's any further debate, I'll call the question.
City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering if administration has a person that they'd want to name right now, or should we come back at a later date with the administrative representative?
Bring that over to Mr. Fox, I believe it is, is there?
Through the chair, I think if we bring it back at a later date.
Right, come back at a further, all right, thank you. Can I take that as your opening and your closing?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Croson, all right, with that, is there any further debate? Then we'll ask, question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Just wait as we get Counselor Schmidt-Rempel back. Next, we are going to be discussing 11.1 Administrative Inquiries and Responses. We do have one from Deputy Mayor Croson regarding a snow fence, and Sheriff Mr. Vanenhuvel being acting city manager, if you've got a response to that?
I'm going to refer that to our Director of Infrastructure, Mr. Riley.
Actually, I believe the response will be coming in two weeks. This is just getting it onto the agenda at this time, and we'll see a response at the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought that this was on from previously that was coming up, so.
This is a new inquiry.
That's correct.
It's a new inquiry, okay. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. All right, next, we'll move to any. And I take it the next would be city council updates, but I would take that there'd be no city council updates, as this is the first meeting of the new council? I believe so. So we do have a motion here, omnibus motion, 14.1, 14.2, and 14.3, the closed meeting. Have someone sponsor this. Counselor Carlson. And it is be it resolved that council direct the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents, and attachments with respect to external legal opinion, COVID-19 update verbal, external organization update verbal, remain confidential pursuant to sections 24, advice from officials, and 27, privileged legal of the Freedom and Information Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Carlson. Call for the vote. Question has been called, all in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. And with that, we will call this council meeting for, what is it, November the 15th, No more motions anymore for that. Gavel is down. Thank you, Mayor Stern. Who's all heading to AUMA?